Here.
Mickey Robinson, Henry Siemens.
Here.
Grant Simmons, Robert Van Winkle.
Here.
Michael Woodley.
Here.
Mickey, would you lead us in a word prayer?
Everybody bow their heads, please. Father, we come to you in the name of your son, Jesus. We thank you for this day. We thank you, Father, for the blessings that you give us each and every day. Father, I pray for this commission. I pray for this county that we keep moving forward. Father, we just thank you again for your son, Jesus. We pray for the military, the men that's out there protecting this country. We thank you, Father, for the freedom that they give us. Again, Father, we thank you for your son, Jesus, that died on Calvary's cross for each and every one who shed his blood for us. In Jesus' mighty name, we pray, amen.
Amen.
The life of the United States of America, a true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next time, give us a warning. Next time, give us a warning so we're standing. That's fine. Item number three, approval of July twentieth meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I make it motion to approve.
I second motion.
Mickey and second, second by Mosley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, motion carries. Item number four, tax rate resolution. Any action? Actually, it's been passed. We got to do it again.
Yes, we got to do it again. There was a word left out that they were not satisfied with. We were talking about earlier, the word that said to... We're supposed to exceed the certified tax rate. So I'll make that in form of a motion. Do we still, do we have to go through and vote on each individual fund again like we did last time? Or can we just?
We just vote on the changes, can't we?
There is no changes.
Just that one change, the way it was worded. Prove the entire budget.
I don't got a guy.
Motion to approve.
What's your question? It was said at two point four of the last meeting. Yeah.
We just left a word out of the resolution that said exceed the certified tax rate. Or that was the wording they wished to have in there at the comptroller's office, and we did not have it worded properly. So they instructed us to come back tonight and revote, reaffirm, I guess. Just the language was not correct.
Right. I got a motion from Will. I hear a second. I'll second. Mr. Chandler, roll call, please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joy Grissom.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
William Maxwell.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yeah.
Michael Woodley.
Anyone wish to change your vote? No, motion carries. Item number five, notary approval approval for Connie Robinson.
Mm-hmm.
Did I pronounce that right?
I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mickey to approve.
I'll second.
Second by Bill.
Second by who?
By Bill.
Bill.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, if motion carries. Item number six, approval of quarter reports. Is there any questions or comments on the quarter reports? Not, I have a motion to approve. Mr. Chairman. I make a motion to approve. A motion by David. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Second, Mr. Siemens. Roll call, please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joy Grissom.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
William Maxwell.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yeah.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote? No, motion carries. Item number seven, committee report. Will.
Go ahead. Okay. First item was the medical equipment for the ambulance service. I talked with Tawana today. She would like to hold that. There's something come up in that with that quote or that bid. So she would like to hold that to next month in order to give her some more time to work on that. Next item is vehicle purchase for the sheriff's department. A motion by Mickey to approve Lonnie Cobb Ford contract for the purchase of two twenty twenty-two police interceptors, sport utility type vehicle, all-wheel-drive base vehicle, seconded by Mr. Chandler. There was some budget money movement due to this. It was in the budget, but we were, the quote had, or the contract had increased since we made the budget. Is that right?
Yeah, that's right. That's correct.
So should we, I guess we should do the approve the purchase of the vehicles first, and then we'll do the budget amendments second. So I'll make that in form of a motion to allow the purchase of two twenty twenty-two police interceptors, utility, all-wheel-drive base vehicles from Lonnie Cobb Ford under state contract.
A motion by Will to purchase the two vehicles. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Second, Mr. Siemens.
For information, this is part of a USDA grant, so one of those vehicles will be reimbursed on a, on a grant, and then we're, we're purchasing one that was already in the budget.
Roll call, please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joy Grissom.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
William Maxwell.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yeah.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote? No, motion carries. Will?
So we need to make, we need to move eleven hundred and eighty-five dollars into the contracts with government agencies, line item one oh one, five, one, one, one zero, line three oh nine, from general fund balance, and this is to pay for those. Like I said, we were, our quote, our contract went up that amount in between budget and executing this. And I'll make that in form of a motion, yeah.
A motion by Will. I hear a second.
I'll second it.
Second, Mr. Siemens. Roll call, please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joy Grissom.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
William Maxwell.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yeah.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote? No, motion carries. Will?
The next part of this, the sheriff agreed to purchase the one that the county is paying for from the drug fund. Is that correct? Correct me if I'm wrong. So the, like I was saying, we're going to buy two. One of those will be paid for by the county, which will come from the drug fund, and then the USDA grant is going to pay for the second one. So this motion is to increase line one oh one, five, four, one, one, zero, line seven eighteen, motor vehicles, and that's in the drug fund. I'm sorry, yes, that's not in the drug fund. That is in the general fund, but the money would be coming from the drug fund, line one, or fund one twenty-two, two, one, five, zeros, there line five ninety, drug control. So that would be moving the money from the drug fund into the general fund to make that purchase.
Make that a motion.
I'll make that in form of a motion. Sorry, it's a little confusing.
Well, motion by Will in a second. Mickey, roll call, please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joy Grissom.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
William Maxwell.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yeah.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote? No, motion carries. Will?
All right. Next item was transfer of funds to the ambulance service. We, we did work, talked about this during the budget talks. I think it was put in, from the best I could tell, from, from the paperwork I had, it was in the expenditure line or in the transfer outline of the county general, but we failed to put it in the transfer into ambulance service. Is that correct? Just, or I'm sorry, Heather. So, so that's correct. It was in the transfer outline of county general. So we're going to move forty thousand from county general to the ambulance service, and this is just to carry them over until taxes roll in. They were, their collections were down due to COVID from back a couple of months ago. They run about five or six months behind on collections. Some of that's picked up, but we're going to have a payroll problem looking forward if we didn't make this movement, and this is just to get them, get that fund back on its feet.
Will this carry them through the taxes?
Yes, I believe it will, yeah, along with what's coming in. We, we just ate up a lot of fund balance back when we, back in the, when we weren't getting any money for COVID. We were shut down. They weren't running any calls, and that's where we were. So we ate up a lot of fund balance. You know, expenses don't change in that department. We still had employees there. We, we have to pay them regardless of whether they're running, so no money was coming in, money was all still going out. So a motion to approve the transfer of forty thousand dollars from line one oh one, five, I'm sorry, fund one oh one, line five, one, one, one zero, line five ninety, county general fund to ambulance service, fund one eighteen, line four, nine, eight, zero, zero.
Motion by Will to hear a second. Second, Mr. Van Winkle.
I have a question on the motion.
Believe it, sir.
It seems like every month we have to put money in the ambulance fund. Did we not budget enough money for the ambulance?
Yes, sir.
Are...
Well, we've, we-
What's, what's causing this? We have to every month give mon- money to the ambulance.
Haven't every month.
We, we haven't every month, but we have addressed that issue in the new budget. We have added some tax pennies to the ambulance fund to help with this, but it does take time for those revenues to, to come in.
We won't realize those revenues until the budgets start, I mean, until the taxes start flowing in after the tax cards go out, and we still have payroll to make between now and then.
Thank you. I yield back.
I got a motion by Will and a second, Mr. Van Winkle. Roll call, please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joy Grissom.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
William Maxwell.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yeah.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote? No, motion carries. Will?
I believe we only had one other thing of business. The Burt Memorial Library addressed the, the board wishing to apply for a grant with the American Rescue Plan Act, and they requested up to twenty thousand dollars as their grant, and then they would like a five percent match.
That's it.
Put that in there correctly. So that would, they'd just like to be approved for that. They just had to have a motion from the commission that we would back them up on their five percent match for that grant. I'd like to make that in form of a motion.
I'll second.
Just to make that clear, it would be five percent of the twenty thousand total, the grants for twenty thousand, so we would only be looking at five percent of that. And I think that was already in their budget, if I'm not mistaken. They just had a, had to have a motion confirmation for the grant. Um, here you go.
Thousand dollars.
I got a motion by Will and a second by Mickey. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Roll call, please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joy Grissom.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
William Maxwell.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yeah.
Michael Woodley.
Anyone wish to change your vote? No, motion carries. Will?
Item number eight, submission of audit committee report.
Is there any questions or comments on it? I don't think there's any action we have to do with it, are there? Nothing I can say with it. We just gotta-
Acknowledge it.
Yeah.
For the record.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, motion to acknowledge the... Do we have to have a motion?
We have to have motions, that, Mr. Attorney?
We need to acknowledge, a motion to acknowledge the audit report. Motion to acknowledge the audit report.
A motion by Will to hear a second.
I'll second that.
Second, Mr. Mosley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, motion carries. Item number nine, old business. There is some old business. Anyone just want to address the old business? I just, I would not want to go back to private service.
We're, there's several counties around us that are in that situation. I'm in the business, very, very familiar with it, and what you wind up with is not the same level of service that we're currently providing. For a large subsidy, we would be substance, the, the private service, and we would get not the level of service we're getting now. You'd basically get a driver and one minimally trained person here in the county twenty-four hours a day, and that's it. Where right now, you have a full ALS crew, paramedic and an EMT twenty-four hours a day, and then in addition to that, you have twelve hours a day during our busiest time, you have an additional crew. So...
It's not counting all the volunteers.
That's not counting everything else.
That live in the county at work for the service.
Uh, they're still not got the final rule on that, but to my understanding, we would not be able to use that because our revenues exceeded. We, we were not, we made up the difference. They look at your revenues as a total countywide, so it's not broken up into individual, and this is to the best of my understanding on this, guys, but they do not look at your individual revenues to individual funds. So if you look up as the county as a whole, due to COVID, we did not suffer a very great loss because we made up a lot in property tax, I'm sorry, in sales tax. So we made up a lot of sales tax, and we lost a lot of patient charges. So in the end, if you look at it in total, we didn't lose very much, and that's what, that's what the government looks at when they, when you can apply that for lost revenue. So that's the rules we're dealing with. To, to the best of my understanding, it's very vague. They have not given the final rule on that. We were advised by the state not to allocate any of that funds till after the first of the calendar year.
Maybe they make up their mind what we use it for. So I hate to use-
I have a feeling that the money, well, I mean, just my personal opinion will come unrestricted at some point. Till after the current calendar year, till in January. They advised us to reevaluate that money in January, ho- hoping that the final rule of how you can spend the money would be published by that point. I understand. The, the problem that they attached with it is if we use that money in error, we could be responsible to pay it all back, and this county cannot afford to pay that amount of money back to the federal government if we use that amount of funds in error. And that was the information we were given.
But either way, we couldn't pay it back.
So even at the state, at the state level, they're still waiting on the federal government to kind of give some guidance on it. But all goes to Washington, DC. You know, we're just waiting on them.
Mr. Chairman, we were, we received a letter here from the mayor, and I'll read it. Says, "I am asking the county commission to vote in all business that if Priority Waste is not ready to close on the BDS property by October first, twenty twenty-one, that the bid be nullified and void. If so, I would like for this to be sent back to Committee B after October first. If you vote to enact this, I'll notify Priority Waste as soon as possible, respectively Greg Wilson, Dambier County Mayor."
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to give Mayor Wilson authority to send this letter.
Motion. Go ahead.
Two thousand for a train for a transfer station prior. It was tabled. It was brought back up again on April twentieth at the full commission meeting under old business. The commissioners were informed by our mayor that Priority Waste had contacted him and said they were ready to proceed on the purchase of BDS property. He said they actually were ready to proceed two weeks prior to that meeting. He said he understood that they wished to use the land for a transfer station. Just after the vote, there was a little bit of confusion about whether the vote that the commissioners had voted on, whether it was for the purchase of the property or how to allocate the funds from the sale of the property. That was clarified up. They were both passed at the same time. Now, although it's been said many times that they could build a house if they want to, as it would be their property, do what they wish with, we were told that the new transfer station at the same time with the new building, et cetera, would bring in thirteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars a year in the tax base. It was told that it would save our county two and a half hours daily truck and labor bringing the garbage to Warren County Transfer Station, and sometimes the drivers got to wait two hours because they have a long line for the transfer station, and that this would save mileage, hours of labor, wear on truck, and it, it would only take like five minutes for the garbage to be taken to the transfer station here. And all that made a lot of sense. That's, that's very helpful to our community, and I'm, I'm for that a hundred percent. However, since then, it's been a constant bring up. There is no guarantee that there's going to be a transfer station. They could build a house if they want to. There was no contingency put on the sale of this property that they had to use it for a transfer station. We were told every two weeks they were fixing to buy this property, that we're selling at a discounted rate, a hundred thousand dollars less than what we were told it was valued at in commercial value. As of last Thursday, the property still had not been purchased. I called Priority Waste's office several times last month, every week to see, you know, we're welcoming you in here. Could you give us a date when you were going to be able to set up, when you were going to buy the property? The ladies that answered the phone don't know anything about it. Please call back next week. I did that for a month. And it's terrible that if they were ready to purchase this property over four months ago, two weeks prior to that April meeting, and they haven't done anything but promise every two weeks, well, we're waiting on the money to pay the school board back and have some money put away that we need. Have any of the commissioners talked to the people at Priority Waste, anybody, about this? Has any of the commissioners actually talked to them?
I've spoke with them before we tried to sell to them, but I mean, to answer your question, that's why we're wanting to put this, this date right here. I mean, that's why we're wanting to go October first. It's time for them to either purchase it or not.
But would you want to give them another six weeks when they've done nothing, and there's no proof that they're going to actually put this transfer station in?
Maybe if we do give them a date, they'll either do it, or they'll say, hey, we don't want to buy it, and we'll, we will move on. You know, that's-
There was, there was no deadline.
It was my understanding, it was my understanding, one of the problems they were having was just like what every other business in this country, in fact, is dealing with is employees. That's, that was what they kept saying, but that's why we're wanting to give them this deadline. It's time to, it's time to move on.
Well, if they were ready to purchase the property four months ago, why hasn't this happened? Have, and I asked if any of the commissioners had talked to Priority Waste you're, you have. But I worry that because no deadlines have been set at the purchase, when the commission voted to sell the property, I worry now if it'll be even used for a transfer station because we're not getting that information. Nobody's saying that for sure. We don't know. We might be just losing a hundred thousand dollars, right? That bothers me. But my hopes are that you give Priority Waste some time. I agree that you should do that if your deadline, they didn't have a deadline before, but they have two weeks to dare. What's wrong with giving them two weeks?
That's, that's why we're giving this deadline. You know, we're, we're tired of waiting. Now, I told you the reason that I was told why they couldn't move along with their plans was employees.
They're going to need more employees.
My understanding was the owners themselves were out there having to drive trucks. And trust me, I mean, I know how it is where I work. We can't keep people. It's a revolving door. So I mean, but that's why we're wanting to give them this deadline.
I just don't think, since they've said two weeks, two weeks, two weeks, that we should give them.
That's why we're, I mean, that's our answer to that.
How long are we giving them now?
Two weeks. October the first.
How many weeks is that?
It'll be a month and a half.
Yeah, that's a month and a half. And they have two weeks to death, and there's no guarantee there'll be a transfer station, and that's just what I'm asking, what I believe in. Is that for y'all?
This, that it could bring to the county, you know, with the jobs, but, you know, if they don't come up here, then we move on.
I'll add to that. It was advertised twice, if I recall, advertised for, to take bids on the property, and no one bid on it, and then they came back and bid on it the third time at the reduced rate. So, I mean, we had entertained no bids, and it had actually even went with a... No, no.
No, no, no.
We advertised, first off, we advertised for a commercial real estate agency to list it, and I believe we, we got no bids on that.
No bids.
And then we put it out for bid ourselves, so that would have been the second time, got no bids. We agreed to open it up a third time to take bids on the property, and they, they gave us a bid of two hundred thousand. There was never a price set on the property with the bids. No, it never went. We never had a commercial real estate agent bid on, bid with the county to sell it. So we had to take bids for a commercial real estate agent to sell it for us, and no one bid to do that. We hadn't, we took no bids. So they would have to say, you know, they bid to sell it for two percent or, or however, and they did not, no one bid on it at that, in that fashion.
Mr. Maxwell is exactly right what he said. Committee B is the one originally sent this to full commission. I made the motion myself personally that we sell it to this company for two hundred thousand dollars. We didn't put it in no real estate hands. They were supposed to buy it a hundred thousand, and my motion was to go to the, pay the school off, and the other hundred thousand would be put in the rainy day fund. Compt controllers got involved in it, and they, they will not, my understanding will, they will not approve a rainy day fund. They do, you put it somewhere else.
That's correct.
So the motion was made only for two hundred thousand to this company, so we could get jobs in here and get a company to come in. If they don't respond to this letter that we're going to give Mayor Wilson, the authority to send them to him by October one, it goes back to Committee B, and I think it's stated in this letter, Mr. Woodley run it off for all of us. It'll come back to Committee B, and we'll reevaluate what we want to do with that property. Hope that helps answer your question, Laura. I understand.
A motion, Mr. Mosley, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Will. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, motion carries. Any other old business? Any new business? Who wants to do new business?
We do have some new business.
Go ahead, Will.
And- And guys, pardon me, I, I, and maybe Heather can help me with this. I'm not sure I understand this completely um, about the, um, tax anticipation note. Uh, the comptroller, I'll read it, what it says here. The comptroller would like to see this paid off, um, in the following manner this week. Um, the payoff as of Wednesday, August 18th, 2021 is 416,449. Um, and behind this, I think you have an amortization schedule. Uh, there was a local government grant that was aborted and deposited into the county funds, 276,871, um, July the 15th.
Basically, that was the state money. Each county got so much money from the state that there is no restrictions on that money. The comptroller's office would like for us to pay this tax anticipation loan that we had to take out last year and use this money to pay that loan off.
Along with what we had budgeted.
Yes.
In the current budget year for this. So let me continue to read here. Uh, the payoff, like I said, be 416,449. The grant money, 276,871. We had in the budget principal on this note was a, to pay 103,000, 103,900 and interest to be paid, 6,359. So a- as I understand this, and if you, Heather, if I'm wrong, correct me, but out of fund balance, we would only incur 29,319.27 cents to clear this up. I, I think this is a good idea. We had talked about this, um, when we did the budget, we talked about we would like to get this, um, taken care of. It would free up some tax dollars, obviously. Um, but we were not sure at that point when we were setting the budget, when this grant money was coming or how much it would be. So we couldn't obviously act on that.
The actual money coming out of our budget to pay this off, Mr. Maxwell, is how much?
It's not in the budget.
It's not already in the budget.
By coming out of the taxpayer.
So, so it would only be coming, let, let me say it like this. It would only be this much coming out of the fund balance.
Okay.
So we've already got the principal amount budgeted of 103,900. And then we already have interest budgeted of 6,359. So that's already in the budget. And then in addition, we would have coming from fund balance, 29,319.27 cents.
Coming out of the budget.
You understand that? Coming out of fund balance.
Fund balance. I make a motion, we'll go ahead and pay this bill, get it, get it paid for, get it over with.
Mr. Mosley, do you hear a second? Second, Mr. Woodley.
Got a few more, uh, Joey, there's a few other things that has to happen on where this, the grant money has to reside. Um, and we have a couple more, uh, resolutions to approve that's behind it here to, to make this in effect. Yes, ma'am. So that was a note that the comptroller, if you remember, when we took the money out and, um, let me make sure I say this correctly. So we used, when we bought the BDS property originally, we took money from, Capital Projects. So there was some money left over in Capital Projects that was from the construction of this building. And then there was some money out of, where was the other one? Out of, what now? It's the general fund, I think. So they, they made us take a tax anticipation loan note to pay that back as well as the money that we had borrowed from the school system to pay that back. So if you recall, we had, we had borrowed 200,000 from the school system. That would have been two budget years ago. And rather than pay that out of fund balance, they recommended that we take that, we take a tax anticipation note along with the money that was due back where we. It did. So we were gonna be able to, we would have been able to pay that, but it would have drawn down our, um, fund balance so, so low that we would have been in a situation again like we were the year before. So we were basically doing no good by paying that back. So the recommendation for them were to pay that money back into the, um, appropriate funds to back. So we took the money basically in error out of the, under bad advice. Out of the building fund where we, the capital projects fund, we took that money out of there. So we had to put that back and then pay off the school. So that's where that came from and we've paid that down. It was 300 and some change and then 200, and then we've paid it down to this point. So that's where we're at, what brought us there today. Does that make sense? Yes. So, so there's, uh, let me look at, and I can tell you what's in fund balance as of today or yesterday. Uh, duh, 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 just a second. We've got 1,503,590 and no taxes have came in yet. So we would only be taking 29,000 of that to, to pay this off, if that makes sense. Yes, ma'am. And we'll be clear that, now that will not open, let me be clear that that will not open up any tax dollars this year because we're already using appropriated tax dollars this year to assist with that payoff. But in the future budget years, it will clear some tax pennies for other uses. I don't believe any of it.
I don't think any of that is.
So we only have a small portion of that has been deposited in our account, a small percentage, and it's in Capital Projects currently under their advice. That's where they wished for us to put that, um, until we could. And the, and the reason we did that is to keep it several, separate from the general fund and we didn't get into a situation.
Got a motion in a second to pay this off. Is this others just?
We need to do it separately.
We go in.
Yep, go ahead and do this.
I got a motion in a second to pay this note off. Roll call, please.
I made the motion.
Roll call, please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joey Grissom.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
William Maxwell.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Not, motion carries.
Okay, um, sorry, I'm trying to find the proper paperwork. So we need to, uh, to put the grant money into line 101, 46,990. Is that correct, Heather? And did I say that correctly? So that will be to transfer, that will be putting the grant money received into the proper line item in the budget. I'll make that in form of motion.
I'll second that. A motion by Will in a second. Mr. Chandler. Roll call, please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Brian Simmons. No, Robert Van Winkle.
Yeah.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Not, motion carries.
Hey, uh, so we have in principle on note, we already have 103,900. And then we would need to add that amount from, that we just talked about, the 276,871. Is that the proper amount? Let me figure that real quick. Give me just a second. Heather, on this page, are you familiar with this? The 311 into principal note. I'm not sure I follow what's going on here. Out of fund balance. Oh, I see, I see. That's the 29,000 as well as the amount we, so we put the 276 in there. So that would make it go into fund balance. So it's the 276,871 plus 29. Plus the 103, or yeah, that's correct. There's already 103 in there. I got it now. Okay. So if you look at the page, the budget resolution that says principal note, it should be the fourth page. So we already have 103,900 in that line item. We agreed just a moment ago to add 29,319 from fund balance. And then the grant money. So the grant money and the 29,000 would go to pay that off. I'll make that in form of motion. It makes a lot more sense on the paper if you can see it. I'm sorry.
A motion by Will to hear a second. All right, Mr. Mo. Mr. Mosley. Roll call, please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joey Grissom.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
William Maxwell.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson. Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yeah.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Not, motion carries. Double checking our numbers.
We're good. I was looking for something else. Yeah. We've already done that.
Is any other new business? Do you think we've missed?
We did those two during, uh, general fund, I mean, Committee A report. The ambulance service, that was the transfer to EMS. I just didn't realize that was attached back there in the paper form, but we've already taken care of.
You have something you want, Dan?
We have asked for a long time for her to be. Now the mayor's not here. I would like to see her here as well. Second.
I got a motion by Mickey to adjourn. Who's second? Mr. Woodley. All in favor, say aye.